Well, everybody, good evening and welcome. It's 7 o'clock, so we're going to get started. Welcome, my name is Amanda Kurtz, Deputy Town Clerk, and I have a few statements for the record before we get started. Tonight's regularly scheduled Herndon Town Council Public Hearing is a virtual meeting. Individuals are encouraged to provide comments for the record at town.clerk@herndon-v-a.gov. The meeting this evening is conducted electronically pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3708.2 as amended, the Governor's Executive Orders as amended, and Ordinance 20-0-23, Continuity of Governmental Operations During Pandemic Disaster COVID-19, as amended. Proper notice of the electronic meeting was provided in accordance with Section 2.2, 3708.2 of the Code of Virginia, along with information for viewing the meeting and submitting comments for the record. The agenda and meeting materials are available on the town's website. Electronic meetings will begin with a roll call to determine a quorum. All votes, including adjournment, will be by roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Amanda. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order this evening. The clerk will call the roll, and I ask that everyone state that your name clearly and indicate that you are present. Before a roll call, I will announce that Councilman McKenna indicated to me earlier to say he had a work obligation and will not be present this evening. So, Madam Town Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Town Manager Bill Ashton?
The manager, Bill Ashton, is present.
Town Attorney Lisa Yates?
Town Attorney Lisa Yates is here.
Vice Mayor Olum?
Vice Mayor Olum here.
Councilmember Baker?
Senator Baker here.
Councilmember Delagula?
Councilmember Delagula here.
Councilmember DeCall?
Councilmember DeCall here.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Councilmember Friedrichs here.
Mayor Merkel?
Lisa Merkel is here. So, we do have a quorum, six in attendance, so thank you for that. This evening, we do have two sets of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the July 7th Work Session Minutes?
Madam Mayor, so moved, this is Signe.
Second, Vice Mayor Olum.
Okay, discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing that, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Olum?
Olum, present. Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember Delagula?
Councilmember Delagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Merkel, yes, so that motion carries. Is there a motion to approve our July 14th Public Hearing Minutes?
This is Signe, so moved.
Second, this is Sheila Olum.
Okay, discussion on the motion? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Olum?
Olum, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember Delagula?
Councilmember Delagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
Councilmember Merkel, oh, sorry about that. Mayor Merkel?
Lisa Merkel, yes, so that motion carries as well. Thank you very much. That brings us to our comments from our town manager. I'll recognize Bill Ashton, the town manager, to provide us on an update of continuity of operations and matters related to the emergency. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Normally, we've talked a lot about the general fund revenues, especially in a COVID environment, and today, we had some updates on our enterprise funds, and I want to be able to provide that to you.
Mr. Town Manager, you're very faint.
Very faint.
Sorry.
And bye. I tell you, Madam Mayor, why don't you move me to the end of the comments, and then I'll let me fix this?
Okay, certainly. If I forget, somebody waved me down. That brings us to comments from the town council. Reminder that still this week, we are limited to continuity of operations or matters related to the emergency, and I will just ask for who has comments. Anybody? Town Manager hopes somebody does, so he can fix his AirPods situation. Does anybody have any comments for us? Well, Madam Vice Mayor? I thought I saw your hand.
Our DPW staff, as usual, someone had put graffiti on the brand-new fence on Eldon and Center Street, and that got taken care of. Thank you.
As always, are there any other comments from council? Okay, the town manager may get into this in his comments, but I did want to mention for the public who is here this evening, that at last week's work session, during our roundtable, we discussed amending our continuity of government ordinance at our next public session, which will be the second Tuesday in September, so that will broaden the scope of what we were able to address during some of our virtual meetings during the situation, and we also discussed how to go about extending the outdoor operations for extra outdoor seating for our restaurants through November, so that will be upcoming as well. So, Mr. Town Manager, are you ready for us? Now he says his IT is frozen. Well, we can certainly come back for comments from the town manager. Why don't we go ahead? I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearings, and then we will come back to the town manager's comments when he is ready for us. So, our first, so first, I will open the public hearings and ask whether our town clerk has received comments for the record on any items that are listed on our agenda this evening, public hearings or otherwise.
Just one moment, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I'm back on the desk.
All right. There you are. Okay, so, Madam Town Clerk, if you don't mind, I'm going to go back to the town manager, and then we'll resume.
Yes.
Okay. I think maybe you saw that coming. Okay, Mr. Town Manager, you have the floor.
Well, thank you. This is our technology. What are you going to do with those technology people?
I know. It's still hard to hear you, so feel free to pick the yell.
I will try to be as loud as possible.
Okay.
All right, so, we've been talking so far during the various other meetings we've had, we've talked a lot about general fund and how it's doing. I wanted to give you an update, because we did get some enterprise fund numbers in, and I just wanted to share where the status of some of our enterprise funds are. First off, you received from me on Friday an update on the golf courses, July numbers, that was a record-setting number. So, the golf course is, in the COVID world, doing actually a little bit better because of some of the alterations we've made to the, some of the alterations we have made to the operations, to allow us to get prepays in, and some of the other things that we've done, and it's paying off. The cemetery, as you know as well, has been doing very well throughout all of this. Unfortunately, they have plenty of market, and that market never seems to fade, so they are doing well. Where we have concerns is the Water and Sewer Fund. Fairfax County sent us an email this week stating that they are raising our million-gallons prices have increased by about 30%. So, those have increased by about 30%, so that's going to put pressure on the Water and Sewer Fund this fiscal year. Delinquencies are up. Year-over-year numbers, we are seeing about a 400% increase in delinquencies over our normal July-August delinquency rate. We have 281 accounts delinquent at the current time. That comprises about 160% increase in delinquent dollars that we are waiting, that we're waiting to have. We would normally be shutting accounts off by now, but as you know, there's a moratorium on interrupting services during the COVID pandemic. That said, some of the things we're keeping an eye on is there's some legislation that may occur in the General Assembly this month that will put an emergency moratorium debt repayment program in place, where all of the utilities, including us, would have to do that. This would be for debt repayment over a 24-month period, which is unprecedented for us. Normally, our debt repayments are in about six months, so these, the delinquent accounts are going to be with us for a while, most likely. We have some issues, as we're looking through the legislation, where we will have to do tracking of account holders' income information to determine if they are applicable for the program, and these are things that are going to stress our staff, and we're going to have to probably, we may have to do some staff augmentation to meet the requirements of this should have become law. Right now, we have about $2 million in operating capital that is in the bank, so it's not like we're in an insolvency place, but it is something that we need to keep an eye on operationally as we move forward, and it is something that we're certainly going to have to take up at a future date when we start talking about getting back on the rate restructuring program that we had been on for the past couple of years. So, that's enough of the enterprise funds. We're going to be doing some continuity of government changes coming up next month. That is very important. We have a couple of affordable housing things that we're working on right now as a staff. One is a very mature idea that we have, we can't wait to bring to you, that we're going to need to have more latitude in continuity of government to do that. And then there's another project that we're working on with the county that is very much in its infancy in terms of conceptualizing it, but it has a lot of problems as well, and we would love to brief you on that if we get the opportunity later on. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the town manager or comments on his statements? Signe, are you raising your hand or fixing your computer? Okay. Ms. Friedrichs?
Hi. Just wanted to thank you so much, because I know you've been working on that affordable housing project for quite some time, and we've been dying to say something to the public, because people have been asking us about it. So, I'm really grateful and pretty proud of you all for doing that. Very concerned about the water and sewer issue as well, but I do want to thank you so much for working on this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the town manager? Yes, sir, Mr. Delagula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Delagula. Mr. Town Manager, can you repeat the number again, the increase from the county to us on the water and sewer?
Yeah.
Was that a cost or a decrease in funding? I missed that one.
Okay, so let me just go back and cover that again for you. It is, the increase was from $2,000 per million gallons of sewer treatment, up to 2,600 per million gallons of sewer treatment, and this is to pay for, the rate increase is due to the Blue Plains Treatment, which is down in DC. They just put their new CIP in place, and they need to fund capital expansion and capital at Blue Plains, where all the dirty waters are treated. So, the county then gets their piece of it from Blue Plains, and then they pass along our.
Okay, so I had heard something there, but, so what's the delta, then, in terms of what we had projected this fiscal year in terms of the cost? What's that whole, what's that delta look like now?
We are still analyzing it right now, but it is looking like we budgeted about, when I talked to Jenny Lake today, it seems as if we are, we're going to be slightly over-budget on that. It doesn't, it's not terrible, because we, the way in which we budgeted, I think what we're seeing too is the usage is down a little bit, which also helps, and so we're, it's going to be, right now, we're estimating just a little bit over-budget, I don't have the exact number.
And again, just, so I'm clear, it's coming out of the general fund?
No, 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 this is the Water and Sewer Fund, Enterprise Fund.
Annualized, okay.
Yep.
Just, when I hear 40% increase is, it's a little bit unnerved, especially with where the budget is now.
And if I can just put a finer point on that, too, we use about 3 million, we pump about 3 million gallons a day of sewage, so this is about an 1,800 per day increase, roughly, give or take.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Other questions for the town manager? Anybody we haven't heard from? Okay, Ms. Friedrichs, one more thing.
Yeah, so, Councilmember Delagula brought something really interesting up, and my question is, given that we're not, that we have, I think you said, 281 delinquent accounts, and we're up 400% in delinquencies, are we covering, I mean, are the numbers you just gave us, including that information, or is this just flat? This is what we budgeted, this is what it's going to cost us?
Well, the first question is an expense question, and so that's rising, however, the way in which we budgeted, we think we're not going to be as bad off as it appears on the surface, we're still looking at that. The second question is a revenue question, where we have 281 accounts that owe us roughly about $70,000, and it's growing. And normally, our ability to collect that would be to terminate the account, to turn the water and sewer off, but we are prohibited from doing that under the state of emergency, and rightfully so, I'm not sitting here trying to say anything otherwise. But what is going to make this potentially even a longer-term issue is they may have 24 months to pay, depending on what comes out of the state later this month.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other comments before we move on, or questions? Okay, great, thank you. So, that does bring us to our public hearings. I will open public hearings and ask the town clerk if we have received any comments for the record on any items listed on our agenda, public hearing or general or consent.
Madam Mayor, we have not received any comments.
Okay. I will also ask whether the town clerk's office has received any transactional disclosure declarations from council on any items listed on our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor, we have not received any disclosures from council.
Okay, great. So, here we are at our public hearings. We have several public hearings on our agenda this evening, which will be divided into three groups of concurrent staff reports. Herndon Parkway-Vamburen Street Intersection, the quitclaim deeds to Dominion, and finally, the conveyance of an easement to VDOT for the East Spring Street Widening Project. Ordinance 20-0-42, 43, and 44 are the first group of public hearings, those are items four through six on our agenda. They are to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of fee simple interests and easements for the public improvements to widen the intersection, add vehicle lanes and other improvements at the Herndon Parkway-Vamburen Street Intersection, on the three parcels of property that are owned by the Unit Owners Association of the Metro Square Condominium, that's the southeast corner of the Herndon Parkway and Vamburen Street Intersection, PS Business Parks LP, successor in interest to Monroe Parkway LLC, which is 570 Herndon Parkway, and Galaxy Atrium LLC, 205 Vamburen Street. I will recognize John Irish, who is our Deputy Director of Public Works, for concurrent staff report on these three items, followed by some likely input from our Deputy Town Attorney Laurie Sigler on the condemnation process, and then, of course, after questions from council, we will hold separate public hearings on each item before a vote. So, I will turn the floor over to Mr. John Irish.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members. Going to give you a brief slide presentation to give everyone a little bit of background history on this project. Next slide, please. So, the project is in the name of, in the intersection of Vamburen Street and Herndon Parkway. The map that you see in front of you on the display is showing the intersection oriented to the north to the top. The three properties we're talking about are located in the bottom-left corner, bottom-right corner, and upper-right corner. This intersection and the need for the project is part of the identified key link to Plan Metro Station, which is expected to open in 2021. Next slide, please. The purpose of the project is to relieve congestion and improve safety at that same intersection by adding turning lanes on the northbound Vamburen side and also on the westbound Herndon Parkway side to increase capacity through the intersection and relieve the worst levels of congestion. Other improvements of this project will include pedestrian signalization, improving the road drainage, where we have consistent drainage issues today with flooding and high water events, stormwater management improvements, and continuity of pedestrian cycle connectivity to other established trails and sidewalks in town. This will improve multimodal connectivity between the downtown area, the regional trails, the future Herndon Metro Station, and by providing bicycle facilities, cycle track mainly, and ADA-compliant pedestrian facilities. This project will utilize as much of the existing right-of-way as is possible to minimize this land acquisition. Next slide, please. The three properties, as I previously mentioned, are in the three corners of the project. In this sketch, it's on the left-hand side, bottom, center, and right-hand side, and the areas that we are looking for condemnation proceedings on are, the right-of-way is in the red, the permanent drainage easements for part of our stormwater improvements is in the blue, and then the majority of the area is actually for temporary construction easements, which will be only as long as the project is, after the project's completed, those easements will go away by virtue of the deeds. With that being said, I will turn this over to Ms. Sigler. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the town council. I am going to walk through, again, just some of the basics and highlights that the town has to consider before it can exercise its eminent domain powers. Number one, the project must be for a public use. No more of the private property may be taken that is necessary to achieve the public purpose, and we have to make a written and bona fide offer to all of the property owners. And it also has to be an ineffectual effort. While we have heard from two out of the three property owners, we have yet to specifically, you know, receive leads from them, so we're coming to council to ask that you give staff the authority to file the certificates of take. During this period, we will continue to, the owners, and we can continue to do that even after the certificates have been filed. The condemnation proceedings will, one of the reasons that we can move forward with the condemnation is that we can't agree on compensation or that they can't convey good title, and there is at least one mortgage lender on these properties that need to sign off on the transaction. In order to move forward with the certificates of a take, we do need to have this public hearing before council, and again, it is only council who can authorize the use of eminent domain. The initial offer letters were mailed to the property owners mid-June, and we had given them a deadline of July 16th in which to respond. We also, under Virginia law, have to send them notice that we're contemplating filing the certificates, and those notice letters have gone out. We can't file a certificate any sooner than August 26th, which is 30 days from the date of our letter, and we can't file them any later than 45 days after that letter went out. And the need to move forward on this project is mainly because of an advertisement deadline with VDOT, that is, the end of the year. Before we advertise, we have to do all of the utility relocation, which will get started as soon as we can secure the property interest. This project also is kind of in the middle of two other projects that council has seen recently, the Vamburen Street Improvements and the Bus Bay Project. So, this project is also kind of a bridge, the same utility providers are doing the relocation, you know, Dominion, Verizon, on all these projects. That is all I had specific, and I'm ready for any questions, if there are any.
Thank you both. What questions does council have for either Mr. Irish or Ms. Sigler on any of these three properties? Any questions? Mr. Delagula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Delagula. Laurie, anything change, or, John, anything change from last week's work session, the update that you gave us?
No, there have been no changes.
No changes.
Okay, any other questions? Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, this is Sheila Olum. Last week, when we talked about the stormwater, I believe staff did say that that was going to include some, some help with the stormwater that is in the gutters right there between Vamburen and Missouri, and we actually have a sign, so that's going to help alleviate that, once that's done, is that right? Mr. Irish?
I'm sorry, I think you're muted, there you go.
Yes, ma'am. That is definitely the portion of the stormwater management improvements we're doing is to alleviate that flooding that occurs.
Thank you, that's what I'm getting questions about, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions on these three items? Anyone? Okay, so, I'm going to outline the, I will outline the public hearing process, I meant to do this before we started with the first item, so this will be true for all of the public hearings going forward this evening. At the appropriate time, I'll ask for those wishing to address the council on a public hearing item to click the hand icon on their WebEx. During the comments portion for the public hearings, the instructions for participation will be posted on the screen, as you see they are right now. And this is also posted on the agendas and minutes page of our town's website. Make sure that we see everyone who wishes to speak. We will pause for a few seconds to wait for a member of the public to have a chance to raise their hand electronically. The clerk will then advise of those that have raised their hands in the order that she sees them on the screen, which may be different from what others on the council and I can see on our screens. We'll also take a brief pause while IT enables the speaker's ability to address the council, and I will call on you when it's your time to speak. If there is a member of the public who wishes to address the council, and the clerk or IT staff see that you are having technical issues, the town clerk's office will contact you to add your comments to the record and see what assistance we may be able to provide in the future. If you have any issues or questions about this process, please contact us through the town clerk's office, who will get your comments right to us. So, you don't have to listen to me say that every time, that will be for everything this evening, but this is a public hearing, so we will start with the public hearing on Ordinance 20-0-42, which is Metro Square Condominiums. This is a public hearing, and if the property owner is here, or any other individual that would like to address the council on this item, Ordinance 20-0-42, I would ask you to please raise your hand, and the town clerk will confirm and let me know if there's anyone here to speak.
Madam Mayor, I do not see anybody waiting to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. So, I'm seeing no speakers. I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Madam Vice Mayor?
This is Vice Mayor Olum. Madam Mayor, I move approval of Ordinance 20-0-42.
Madam Mayor, this is Signe. I move approval, I mean, I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by the vice mayor and seconded by Ms. Friedrichs. Discussion on the motion. Anyone? Ms. Friedrichs?
I think this is...
I think this is something we have to do. It's basically a technicality, and nobody seems to be objecting to it, so I think it's justified and will help us complete all of our projects in a timely manner, so I approve of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay, then I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Olem?
Olem, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember DeLagula?
Councilmember DeLagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
Call, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Merkel, yes, and that motion carries unanimously this evening. This is a public hearing. Our next item is the public hearing on ordinance 20043, which is PS Business Parks. So this is a public hearing. I would ask if the property owner or any other individual would like to address the council on this item, to please raise your hand electronically, and the clerk will let us know that you're ready to speak.
Madam Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
Thank you, ma'am. So seeing no speakers, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Is there a motion? Madam Vice Mayor?
Sheila Olem. Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 20-0-43.
Baker, I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve made by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Councilmember Baker. Is there discussion on this motion? Anyone? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Olem?
Olem, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember DeLagula?
DeLagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
Call, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
Councilmember McKenna? Oh, I keep doing that, I'm so sorry. Here, Merkel.
Merkel, yes, and that motion carries unanimously as well. And that brings us to the third item that has already been... We've received the staff report on, which is ordinance 20044, the Galaxy Atrium property. If there is anyone from the public or the property owner here that would like to speak, we certainly welcome you at this time.
Madam Mayor, I do not see anyone waiting to speak.
Thank you very much. Then I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Madam Vice Mayor?
Sheila Olem. Madam Mayor, I move approval of 20-0-44.
This is Baker. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, Madam Vice Mayor? I keep forgetting, I can't see that I'm looking at you.
Yeah. Sheila Olem, definitely look forward to seeing this whole project done, and the thing that will be so noticeable will be all that water that's out there every time we have like an inch or two of rain, and I know the residents over there will be as well.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Thank you. I just wanted to comment that it has been my experience that we've done several items like this for tiny little pieces of property for these road improvements we've been talking about for years and planning for, and it's not really unusual to not have a lot of public comments, so I just wanted to just say that for the record. We've tried to work collaboratively with these landowners so that when we get to this point, this is how it works. So if there's no further discussion, I will call the question and ask the clerk to... Once again, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Olem?
Olem, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember DeLagula?
DeLagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Merkel, yes, and that motion carries as well. The second group of public hearings this evening include items seven through 10 on your agendas. Their ordinance is 20045, 46, 47, and 48, and they relate to the conveyance of the power utility easements by Quick Claim deed to Virginia Electric and Power Company, doing business in Virginia as Dominion Energy Virginia. The easements for the location of the Dominion facilities relative to the Van Buren Street Improvement Project on the property are owned by James R. Lee at 403 Hillwood Court, Nicole and Patrick Lopez at 433 Van Buren Street, and Valerie J. Winstead Trustee at 405 Van Buren Street. And the easements are for the location of Dominion facilities relative to the Herndon Metro Rail access improvements on the property owned by Parkview Executive Center Joint Venture RLLP, which is at 593 Herndon Parkway. The public hearings have been opened, and once again, I will recognize our deputy town attorney, Lori Sigler, for concurrent staff reports on these four items. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the Town Council. This is Lori Sigler, Deputy Town Attorney, and I'm going to just walk you through the various properties in which we need to quickclaim power utility easements to Dominion. You have seen all of these properties before. All of these properties, we did use certificates of take to acquire the property interests necessary for the Van Buren Street Improvement Project and the Herndon Metro Rail or the Bus Bay's project. Working with Dominion, we felt this way. What happened with the original transaction is the town acquired all the property interests, including this utility easement. We compensated the property owners for the easement and then paid them directly. This way, we are now quickclaiming whatever interest we did acquire back to Dominion, and this was simply just an easier way to do the transaction rather than the town paying Dominion, who would then have to pay the property owner for the interest in the property. So next slide. The first property we have here is Mr. James Lee property, and the yellow area on the plat shows the 150 square foot Dominion easement. Next slide. On this one, we have the property owned by the Lopezes, and you can see that's simply a 100 square foot area marked in the yellow. Next slide. There are two easements on Valerie Winstead Trustee property for a total of 129 square feet. And next slide. This is the Parkview property, which is the only one that was associated with the Herndon Metro Rail or the Bus Bay's property. The Dominion easement here is the hatched lines that you see that runs adjacent to, I believe that was a car pull-off area in that, and that was a total of 1,920 square feet. So again, because these are all interests in real property, it does require a public hearing before the Town Council in order that these easements are conveyed to Dominion. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. What questions do we have for Ms. Sigler? Any questions from council? Okay. Thank you very much. So these are three separate public hearings that we need to take action on. So the first item is ordinance 20045, the property owned by James Lee at 403 Hillwood Court. Anyone that would like to address the council, please check your screens and raise your hands electronically, and the clerk will call on you.
Madam Mayor, I do not see anybody waiting to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, I will close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action. Is there a motion? Madam Vice Mayor?
Sheila Olem. Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 20-0-45.
This is Baker. I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Ms. Baker. Is there discussion on the motion? Anyone? Okay, thank you. So seeing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Olem?
Olem, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember DeLagula?
DeLagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Merkel, yes, and that motion carries. Our next public hearing is ordinance 20046 for the property owned by Nicole and Patrick Lopez. So this is a public hearing, so if the property owner or any other individual would like to address the council, please raise your hand on the WebEx, and we will address you as soon as possible.
Madam Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
Thank you, Madam Town Clerk. So with that, I will close this public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Olem?
Sheila Olem. Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 20-0-46.
Baker, I'll second that.
All right. Motion made by Ms. Olem, seconded by Ms. Baker. Is there discussion on this motion by anyone? Okay, seeing none, I will close the discussion, call the question, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Olem?
Olem, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember DeLagula?
DeLagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Merkel, yes, and that motion carries. Next is the public hearing 20047. This is the property owned by Valerie Winstead Trustee at 405 Van Buren Street, and if there's the property owner or anyone else who would like to address the council, we welcome your comments at this time.
Madam Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, then, seeing no speakers, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor, this is Baker. I move approval of 20-0-47.
Olem, second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Baker, seconded by Ms. Olem. Discussion on the motion. Okay, then, thank you. I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Olem?
Olem, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember DeLagula?
DeLagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Merkel, yes, that motion carries. And finally, for this, that, we have the public hearing on ordinance 20-048, Parkview Executive Center. This is a public hearing, and I will ask if the property owner or any other individual would like to address the council on the ordinance regarding property owned by the Parkview Executive Center Joint Venture at 593 Herndon Parkway.
Madam Mayor, I do not see any speakers on this item.
Thank you very much. So I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. You got to be fast to beat Sheila or Jen. Madam Vice Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 20-0-48.
Baker, I'll second that.
We have a motion made by Ms. Olem and seconded by Ms. Baker. Is there discussion on the motion? Okay, then I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Olem?
Olem, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember DeLagula?
DeLagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
Call, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Merkel, yes, and that motion carries. Next up, there are public... A public hearing on ordinance 20-049, the VDOT easement for Herndon Parkway. The last public hearing on our agenda this evening is item number 11, ordinance 20049 for the conveyance of an easement on town-owned property at 397 Herndon Parkway for transportation facility improvements associated with the East Spring Street widening project. Public hearing is open, and I will recognize Deputy Town Attorney Lori Sigler for the staff report.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, members of the Town Council. This is Lori Sigler, Deputy Town Attorney, and this is the last item that I have on the agenda this evening. This item is here because the town has been asked to convey an easement to VDOT for the East Spring Street widening project. Next slide. And again, any conveyance of property owned by the town can only be done after a public hearing, so that's the reason that we're here this evening. The East Spring Street widening project, again, it's a town project that's administered by VDOT and requires the town to share in the project costs with the matching component. These improvements kind of center around Spring Street and the intersection with Herndon Parkway. The project's currently in right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation. VDOT has determined that it needs a 618 square foot temporary construction easement on the town-owned property at 397 Herndon Parkway, which you also know as the Police Department property. VDOT has requested that the town donate the easement in lieu of compensation. Next slide. The easement, because it's temporary, will automatically terminate when the project is complete. We've had DPW in the engineers review the easement and the plans. It's going to cause a minimal impact on the area that's overgrown, and there's a significant slope on the property as it slopes upwards towards the WNO trail next to the property. Land acquisition costs are already running over budget for the project, and if the town requests compensation for the easement, we're in the end only increasing the cost overruns for the project, and a portion of which may have to be covered by the town on the back end of the project. So that's why VDOT has asked for the donation, like I said, in lieu of compensation. Next slide. Just to give you a quick overview, the main reason that the easement on the town property is necessary is because of the improvements that are going to be done to the cycle track and the sidewalk along Herndon Parkway. So I have up here the intersection of Herndon Parkway and Spring Street. You can see the Northwest Federal Credit Union that I've highlighted in orange, and you can see that the cycle track and sidewalk is in blue. And if we continue down Herndon Parkway, next slide, you'll see that those improvements, the yellow and the blue, go all the way to where I have an area highlighted in red. That red is the temporary construction easement on the town property. So that is right where our property abuts the WNO trail that is elevated in that location. So you can see that's exactly where most of the work terminates and the reason why they need this temporary construction easement. If you go to the next slide, please. This is one of the plan sheets that VDOT has provided us with. Again, the yellow area that's highlighted is the 618 square feet on the town property. And as part of this, the mayor will need to sign a deed of donation and an acknowledgement that just states that the town understands that we're accepting or we're donating the property in lieu of compensation. And that is all I have on this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Sorry, my dog was barking. I was trying to mute. Are there any questions for Ms. Sigler? I think I saw Ms. Friedrichs' hand. Ms. Friedrichs?
Just quickly, what you're asking us for is to lend property that we're not using to to the Commonwealth of Virginia to make an improvement on a cycle track for our benefit at no cost.
That is correct. And again, it's only a temporary easement. So as soon as the project is done, we have free use of the lands once again.
So it's all benefit to us and no reason to ever charge them for it, right?
That's right. And the town has done this before for other VDOT projects as well.
Okay, thank you.
I liked that summary, Ms. Friedrichs. Are there other questions for Ms. Sigler? Mr. DeCall?
Thank you. And just to make sure I heard that right also, the second reason we're not charging any fee for that easement is because when we do that, we actually increase our own overrun, right? And that's the reason why there is no point of charging any fee for that. Rather, we are temporarily donating the space to get the project. Am I correct in that?
Yes, this is Lori Sigler, Councilman DeCall. Right, because the town has money in the project, we would just be increasing to the overrun that ultimately, right, may come out of our pocket. That's right.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? Anybody? No. Okay, thank you very much. Let me see where we are. So this is a public hearing. I will ask if there's anyone here who would like to address the council on ordinance 20-0-49 to convey a temporary construction easement to VDOT on town-owned property at 397 Herndon Parkway. And the directions for raising your hand and participating are on the screen for you right now.
Madam Mayor, I do not see anybody waiting to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. So seeing no speakers, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action on this item. Madam Vice Mayor?
Sheila O'Leary, Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 20-0-49.
Baker, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Ms. O'Leary. And multiple seconds, but I heard Jen first, so seconded by Ms. Baker. Is there discussion on the motion, anyone? Okay, thank you. Then I will ask the clerk. I will close or call the question, ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor O'Leary?
O'Leary, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall? Councilmember DeCall, I didn't hear you. Oh, I think he's frozen.
He looks frozen.
Oh, yes, okay.
Okay, I heard that too. Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Merkel, yes. So that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. That brings us to our general item. This, we have one item, which is, yes, one item, which is Resolution 20G28 to ratify the federally required agreement between the town and Fairfax County for the use of CARES Act funds. This is good news. It's why we left it on the general portion of the agenda. I'll recognize our town attorney for the staff report. Madam Town Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, good evening. As you're probably aware, on March 27, Congress passed the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act, CARES Act, to provide support directly to state and local governments to address the COVID-19 pandemic. Governments with populations greater than 500,000 were awarded this money or could apply and awarded this money directly. Fairfax County was the only jurisdiction in Commonwealth of Virginia to directly apply for and receive this money. The county passed a proportionate amount of the money to us, which was $4.2 million to the town based on its 2019 U.S. Census population. The funds were transferred from Fairfax County to the town on April 29. In order to comply with federal grant funding requirements and to be consistent with the federal government and county expectations of us, it is necessary for the town to execute a subaward agreement with the county to use this money as it was originally intended to be used by the federal, as the federal government required, and certain reporting requirements and other procedures and policies that we're required to comply with. Very simply, if the town does not execute this subaward agreement, we would have to return the $4.279 million to Fairfax County. So I think we can all agree that it's rather important, and we're asking that you approve, ratify, sorry, because it was actually signed by the manager earlier this month. We asked that you ratify it so it can be completely approved this evening. Thank you. I would like, I'll answer any questions, but if it's specifically related to the funds, I probably have to defer to the town manager.
Great. Are there questions for either the town attorney or the town manager on this item? Nobody's questioning $4.2 million. Mr. Delagula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Delagula, I'm not questioning. We understand, but just for the public and for the record, these funds are going to be specifically used for the purposes they were intended to, correct? We're not deviating the slightest for what they were supposed to be and intended to be allocated for.
Madam Mayor, this is the last town manager. I'll take that. I'll take that question. Yes, council member, that's exactly, you're exactly right. We have a limited, specific set of things we can use the money for that is related to COVID-19. And we are going by that playbook. As a matter of fact, whenever we come up with a proposal for usage, we run it through the county's grant people, and ultimately, we seek guidance out of the Fed as well. So this is something that we are very measured in, because if we make a mistake on this, not only will we have to pay that back to the town's reserves, but it will also affect all of our other federal grant programs, which will trigger an audit of those as well. So this is something that we are being very cautious with, and are really doing our due diligence whenever we come up with a proposal to spend this money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? Okay. Thank you. Then I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 20G28. I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Baker, I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion made by Mr. Delagula and seconded by Ms. Baker. Discussion on the motion, anyone? Ms. Baker?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're all really thankful for Fairfax County for, I'm surprised, I didn't realize we were the, they were the only one in the state that asked for this money, and of course, that we get a portion of that. So thanks to our staff as well.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor, I think I saw your hand as well.
Thank you. In the midst of a catfight over here, if you hear growls, I was so excited to hear how easy it was to work with our partners at Fairfax County, our chair, McKay, our supervisor, John Faust, and all the rest of the gang at Fairfax County Board of Supervisors. And it really does pay to have a good relationship with your fellow elected officials. And I know our staff does with Fairfax County staff as well. So, and I know that we've got plenty of expenses that are related to the CARE Act because of how our town manager and staff are taking care of our employees so that they can continue doing the work and running our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Delagula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Delagula. And I think the fact that Fairfax County was the only district, county in the Commonwealth to apply speaks to, I think, the thought leadership of not just the chairman, certainly the chairman, but the entire board. I think for the residents of Herndon, we need to, just for the record, be thankful that we do have a pretty forward-thinking, progressive group of us that are setting us up for success long-term. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Yeah, I completely agree. This was a very smooth experience. And when this happened, it was very early on in the pandemic when things still felt, not that we're like cozy at the moment, but it was very dicey day to day, and we were really worried about a lot of things. And but by the time we had drafted the letter to formally ask for our share, it was already in the works to get to us. So it is a testament to the years of good faith work between the council and the Board of Supervisors and the chair and our two staffs, as you guys have all said. So there are many jurisdictions in the Commonwealth who are not in receipt of any federal funds and are still fighting to even get the opportunity for them. So we are certainly lucky. So thank you, Fairfax County. And with that, I will call the question. We have the motion made by Mr. Delagula, seconded by Ms. Baker, and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Yes, just one moment, Madam Mayor. We're having a small technical issue, but we'll call the roll in just a second.
Okay, no problem. Those are going around.
Okay. Vice Mayor O'Leary?
O'Leary, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, heck yes.
And Mayor Merkel?
Merkel, yes. So that motion carries. And that brings us to our consent agenda, which includes items 13 through 15, which are two lease agreements and reappointments to the Planning Commission. Commotion is what I said. Maybe that's a Freudian slip. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I see the vice mayor.
Madam Mayor, this is Sheila O'Leary. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. DeCall, I second that.
Okay, so motion made by Ms. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. DeCall. And I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor O'Leary?
O'Leary, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Merkel, yes. That motion carries as well. And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, this is Sheila O'Leary. I move adjourn.
Baker, I'll second that.
Okay, I will call the question. All those in favor, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Okay. Vice Mayor O'Leary?
O'Leary, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Merkel, yes. And we stand adjourned at 8:03 PM. And we will see you guys back here in September. Have a great night.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.